Good morning, everyone. Commissioner Dominic is sick. So therefore, I will be chairing this meeting today. I'd like to call to order and everyone please stand for the pledge.
As the leaders of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, under God, in this law, the people should.
Okay, thank you. I'll entertain a motion for the reading and approval of the minutes of last meeting.
Make that motion.
Second, on the question, all in favor? Aye. Opportunity for the public to address the board agenda items only.
We received no agenda emails today.
Okay, thank you. Progression presentation. Two one zero zero eight two. Hey. Mr. Jeffers?
He's muted. Brian, you're muted.
I believe Commissioner Shermack is reading this.
I am reading it.
Okay, go ahead.
Whereas sexual assault affects women, children, and men of all racial, cultural, cultural and economic backgrounds. And in addition to the immediate physical and emotional costs, sexual assault may have associated consequences of post-traumatic stress disorder, substance abuse, depression, homelessness, eating disorders, and suicide. And whereas sexual assault can be devastating not only to the survivor, but also their family and friends. And no one, person, organization, agency, or community can eliminate sexual assault on their own. But we can work together to educate our citizens about what can be done to prevent sexual assault, support survivors and their significant others, and increase support for agencies providing services to these victims. And whereas Sexual Assault Awareness Month provides an excellent opportunity for citizens to learn more about preventing sexual violence before it happens and to show support for agencies such as the Women's Resource Center and their staff that provides critical advocacy services and support to sexual assault survivors. And whereas Lackawanna County strongly supports the efforts of national, state, and local partners and of every community member to actively engage in public and private efforts to prevent sexual violence. It is time for all of us to start conversations, to take appropriate actions, and support one another to create a safer environment for all. Now, therefore, we, Debbie Dominic, Jerry Notterianni, and myself, Chris Shermack, Commissioners of Lackawanna County, Pennsylvania, do hereby acknowledge and proclaim April 2021 as Sexual Assault Awareness Month in Lackawanna County.
Thank you. I don't believe the woman who was going to speak on this was able to log on today. I don't see her name in the corner, but we will send this over to the Women's Resource Center.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay, moving on, resolution two one zero zero nine two.
Proving the current payables, be it resolved, Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County does hereby approve the filing payables. Lackawanna County's general fund numbers three one eight five seven three dash three one nine oh seven zero five inclusive totaling nine million five hundred seventeen thousand two hundred sixty-seven dollars and fourteen cents. Electronic fund transfers including all payroll accounts totaling eight million six hundred forty-six thousand two hundred sixty-one dollars and ninety cents. Adopted at a regular meeting of the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County held on April seventh, 2021. Mr. Chairman.
On the resolution, I will entertain a motion to approve.
I'll make a motion to approve current payables.
Second, Commissioners, if I might quickly, I want to call to your attention, there is an electronic funds transfer transaction on the payables list in the amount of twenty-four thousand two hundred dollars payable to the Wright Center for exams associated with the vaccines, vaccinations. That EFT transaction has been voided and will not be paid. My office was holding that payment, waiting for clarification. Since then, the Wright Center announced they will no longer be charging this exam fee. Just wanted to point that out to you.
Okay, thank you.
Question? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Resolution two one zero zero eight three.
Adopting an amendment to the article of incorporation for COLTS, whereas the County of Lackawanna Transit System Authority is a body corporate and politic incorporated by the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County and is existing under governed by the provisions of the Municipalities Authorities Act fifty-three P A C S A fifty-six oh one, which codifies and amends the Municipalities Authorities Act of nineteen forty-five as amended and supplemented. And whereas, by this resolution, the authority proposed to amend its Articles of Incorporation by adding a provision to extend its existence for a period not to exceed fifty years from the date of the authority's approval of the Articles of Amendment pursuant to the powers vested in it by the act. And whereas the authority submitted the proposed amendment to its Articles of Incorporation to the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County, Pennsylvania for adoption in accordance with the applicable provisions of the act, and now therefore be it resolved that, number one, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County of Pennsylvania hereby adopts this resolution proposed by the authority to amend its Articles of Incorporation, to add a provision to extend its existence to a date not to exceed a period of fifty years from the date of the authority's approval of the Articles of Amendment. And this resolution shall be effective immediately. Adopted at a regular meeting of the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County held on April seventh, 2021. Commissioners here to speak upon that is Attorney Joseph De Naples.
Good morning, thank you for having me today.
Morning.
Morning.
On behalf of COLTS, we are respectfully requesting that the Lackawanna County Board of Commissioners, as the governing authority pursuant to the Municipal Authorities Act, adopt the requested resolution. The timeframe in terms of expiration of the existing certificate of incorporation leaves us about one to about one and a half years left, October thirty-first of 2022, until the pending, or excuse me, the existing certificate of incorporation expires. This request would put us in a position where we would have an additional fifty years moving forward. And again, it's respectfully requested.
Anyone have any questions for Mr. De Naples?
I do not.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion to approve.
I'll make that motion.
Second, on the question. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, thanks, Mr. De Naples.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Resolution two one zero zero eight five.
Entering into an agreement with Cornerstone Detention Products, be it resolved, as Lackawanna County is hereby enter into a service agreement with Cornerstone Detention Products Incorporated on behalf of the Lackawanna County Prison. Agreement to commence immediately and expire December thirty-first, 2021, for maintenance, repair, and/or evaluation of new or existing security equipment. Adopted at a regular meeting of the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County held on April seventh, 2021. Commissioners here to speak upon that is our Warden, Mr. Tim Betty.
Good morning, Commissioners. We're looking to, it's the routine annual service contract that's between Lackawanna County, and it was formerly known as Comtech. It's now, the official name is Cornerstone. And basically what they do is they provide verification and inspection of all of our electronic equipment, in particular to our sliding doors and boards. Has an annual fee of twelve thousand six hundred and eighty dollars. Again, that's the routine, that's what we've always dealt with, and just looking to see if the Board of Commissioners would be agreeable to signing off on this annual contract.
Anybody have any questions for Mr. Betty?
No, they do a good job for us, Tim.
Yes, they do an excellent job. They've been with us since we built this facility back in nineteen ninety-eight.
Okay, nope, I'm good.
On that, I'll entertain a motion to approve.
Go move.
Second, on the question, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Resolution two one zero zero eight six.
Certifying matching state funds in the County of Lackawanna Transit System, be it resolved, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County is hereby resolve and certify that it will provide the County of Lackawanna Transit System, COLTS, local funds in the amount of eight hundred and thirty-six thousand eight hundred and eighty-five dollars to match state funds provided pursuant of seventy-four P A C S Section fifteen thirteen in fiscal year 2021 to 2022. Furthermore, the Board of Commissioners resolves and certifies that the required amount of local matching funds will be provided no later than the end of the state fiscal year, June thirtieth, 2022. Adopted at a regular meeting of the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County held on April seventh, 2021. Commissioners here to speak upon that is COLTS Executive Director, Mr. Bob Fune.
Good morning, everybody. So this resolution for the local match is just standard operating procedure. We go through this every year. We are required by PennDOT through Act eighty-nine to apply for our local, our state operating money. And according to the law, a local match has to be provided. County provides this local match every year to us. So our operating grant is roughly seven million five hundred sixty-two thousand dollars and nine, nine hundred ninety-four dollars. And the local match is, is at eleven percent now. Eventually, a local match, it will go up to fifteen percent, but right now, we're at about eleven. So that's the eight hundred and thirty-six thousand eight hundred and eighty-five dollars local match to match the operating money. Just to note, the operating money is staying, that all agencies across the state receive, is not going up this next fiscal year, it's staying the same as the 2021 fiscal year. Because of financial issues in the state, the state is keeping us level for now, and we are working on new funding bills, but legislation. So that's basically what it is. It's just a routine resolution we do every year that we need to attach to our operating grant when we, application, when we send it into PennDOT.
Okay.
Thanks, Bob. Anyone have any questions for Bob?
I don't.
Entertain a motion to approve.
Motion.
Second, on the question, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Resolution two one zero zero eight seven.
Entering into a grant agreement with Neighbor Works. Be it resolved, the Commissioners of the County of Lackawanna does hereby authorize a grant agreement between Department of Economic Development of Lackawanna County and Neighbor Works Northeastern Pennsylvania. Eight fifteen Smith Streets Grant in P A, a Pennsylvania nonprofit community development organization. Be it resolved that the county intends to undertake and carry out the first-time home buyers program to assist median and low-income individuals and families in Lackawanna County in preserving and achieving home ownership by providing down payment subsidies and closing out cost subsidies utilizing one hundred twenty-nine thousand three hundred seventy-five dollars in funds made available by the Lackawanna County Affordable Housing Act one thirty-seven Program Fund. Be it further resolved, Neighbor Works of Northeastern Pennsylvania will undertake the administration of the first-time home buyers program. Adopted at a regular meeting of the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County held on April seventh, 2021. Commissioners here to speak upon that is our Director of Economic Development, Ms. Brenda Sacco.
Morning, everyone.
Morning.
Morning.
This resolution is authorizing a grant agreement between the Department of Economic Development and Neighbor Works Northeastern Pennsylvania to administer a first-time home buyer program on behalf of Lackawanna County. The program will assist lower-income individuals and families in Lackawanna County in obtaining homeownership by providing a grant up to seventy-five hundred dollars for down payment and closing cost assistance. These funds have been made available through our Lackawanna County Affordable Housing Act one thirty-seven program. The program should go live within the upcoming months. Anyone have any questions?
No, you've done a great job with all of these programs, Brenda, helping people. Thank you.
Oh, thank you. Thank you for allowing me to do that.
Thank you.
Anyone have any questions for Brenda?
Nope.
Entertain a motion to approve.
A motion.
Second, on the question, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, resolution two one zero zero eight eight.
Authorizing the filing of an application with the United States Economic Development Administration, whereas Lackawanna County is interested in expanding and providing broadband service in Lackawanna County. And whereas Lackawanna County will submit a grant application to the U.S. Economic Development Administration CARES Act Recovery for the Economic Adjustment Assistance Grant Funding for the purpose of the Lackawanna County Broadband Expansion and Connectivity Program Project. And whereas Lackawanna County is requesting funds in the amount of four million three hundred eleven thousand four hundred sixty-one dollars to be used to develop the required design and engineering needed to competitively bid, undertake, implementation, and completion of this project, along with all required inspections and adherence to federal Commonwealth and Lackawanna County protocols and guidance. And whereas Lackawanna County hereby authorizes the Director of the Lackawanna County Department of Planning and Economic Development, Brenda Sacco, to be the authorized official and representative to sign and authorize all documents and accept any awards related to the U.S. Economic Development Administration CARES Act Recovery for Economic Adjustment Assistance Grant. Now therefore be it resolved, this seventh day of April 2021, that the Lackawanna County Board of Commissioners hereby approve the submission of this application to the U.S. Economic Development Administration CARES Act Recovery for the Economic Adjustment Assistance Grant Program on behalf of Lackawanna County. Adopted at a regular meeting of the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County held on April seventh, 2021. Here to speak upon that, Commissioners, once again, is Ms. Sacco.
This resolution is authorizing the filing of an application with the U.S. Economic Development Administration for CARES Act Recovery Assistance Program for the Lackawanna County Broadband Expansion Project in the amount of four point three million. The total estimated project cost is five, five point four million. The twenty percent match requirement will be approximately one million dollars and will be met by an in-kind labor contribution by Lackawanna County. The requested funding will be to design, purchase, install, and equip five tower locations throughout the county that are classified as rural and that currently have limited or no service and large service gaps. Anyone have any questions?
The two, Commissioners, the, this is, this is addition to the other federal money we've received or we're going to receive, correct?
Yes, this is, this is a competitive grant that we're going for.
Great job.
Thank you.
So the two items, Commissioners, for Ms. Sacco, this is not part of what we use with the CARES Act, right?
No, if we receive that, this will be in addition to the money that we received the last year for the CARES Act.
So the money that we've already received from the CARES Act that we've already put into the broadband expansion, this is gonna, if we get this, this will expand that. Also, the public needs to know that the Commissioners, myself, and Sacco met with Senator Casey last week, where he spoke upon the broadband expansion also from the American Relief Act that's coming through in the next couple of weeks. We're hoping sooner or later, we get guidelines on that, the forty million dollars that's coming to the county. You want to touch on the municipalities that have been calling you? I mean, we've been getting, the municipalities, as everybody knows, is getting their own money. And as you, everyone well is well aware, Ms. Sacco and her department took care of the money for the municipalities in the last CARES Act in 2020, where they, you know, sent in all their bills and took care of all that, the process for the municipalities. They are now reaching out to Ms. Sacco again, because quite frankly, the Lackawanna County's Economic Development Group is pretty broad. We have a large group, and some of these municipalities don't have the resources for that type of stuff where they have to understand. However, even if we want to help them spend the money out, we still don't have the guidelines, right, Brenda?
Correct. We have not received any official guidance, other than that was released on March eleventh, when the, the plan was put into place. We are awaiting additional guidance, because again, this program will be where, you know, the counties and the cities and the municipalities will receive the funding, and then they will spend it based on the eligible guidelines. And unfortunately, if it's spent on, on items that, that don't meet the guidelines, it could potentially have to be paid back. So we administer thirty-eight municipalities through our Community Development Block Grant Program, and our municipalities are used to us assisting. So they have been calling and learning that they now are going to receive this money directly and would be administering it on their own. So we're here to still help them and to guide them in any way that we can. But again, we need to get further guidance.
And number, we haven't received any money yet, right? No one's received any money yet?
No, not yet.
And number two, this will, I mean, the Commissioners need to know that because of the way it was shaped the last time, it pretty much took up all of our, our staff's time downstairs to take care of the funding, particularly the Scranton file, which took up eighty percent of their time due to a lot of duplicates and twenty nineteen bills and all that kind of stuff that they were throwing in there, and just tell them, basically asking our staff to figure it out. So this will free up our, our staff's time, so they can concentrate strictly on what we need to get done in the county as, as large. Now, they will definitely help those thirty-eight municipalities out, but we won't, our time will be freed up, especially since we don't have to deal with the Scranton file.
Correct, yes. We, our, our staff was dedicated and worked many, many hours on, on helping our municipalities and getting that funding out and ensuring that it was impactful and that it was eligible, so that no one needed to, to repay, pay the funding.
That's all, Commissioners.
So in reality, we'll end up spending, you'll end up continuing to help the municipalities, even though it's not required.
We will, we won't be administering on their behalf, but we're always here if they have guidance that, that we could assist with.
Okay, that's good. And the, the city was particularly interesting to deal with during the course of the last.
Yes, we, we received a lot of items, a lot of expenses, and, you know, we had a staff of, of three people that were solely dedicated to going through each and every single expense to ensure that it was eligible, so that they didn't have to pay any items back. So it was, it was time-consuming, but we were able to get through it and get through it in the time we needed.
Hopefully, we'll be able to get that done again.
Yes.
Anyone, anything else?
Nope.
Entertain a motion to approve.
I'll make a motion.
Second, on the question. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, thanks, Brenda.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
All right, motion, resolution two one zero zero eight nine.
Authorizing the filing of a RACP for criminal justice building project, whereas Lackawanna County Criminal Justice Building Project entails the purchase, design, construction, infrastructure, and other related costs of an acquired vacant property at thirteen sixty Wyoming Avenue, Scranton, P A, into a new criminal justice building. And whereas the County of Lackawanna is eligible, is an eligible applicant for redevelopment assistance capital program funds as a source for the finance, to finance the project. And whereas Lackawanna County desires to obtain funding from the Commonwealth RACP Program for the project. And whereas Lackawanna County is hereby authorizes the Chair of the Lackawanna County Board of Commissioners to sign and authorize all documents and accept any rewards related to these RACP funds. And now therefore be it resolved that the Lackawanna County Board of Commissioners is hereby authorized to file an application in the amount of two million dollars to the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania for a redevelopment assistance capital program grant for the project. Adopted at a regular meeting of the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County held on April seventh, 2021. Once again, Commissioners here is Ms. Sacco.
This resolution is authorizing the filing of a redevelopment assistance capital program grant application with the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania for the Lackawanna County Criminal Justice Building Project in the amount of two million dollars. This project entailed renovating an existing building to the Department of Correction Standards, and it will create efficiencies within the criminal justice system for Lackawanna County. Anyone have any questions?
No questions, entertain a motion to approve.
Motion.
Second, on the question, all in favor?
Aye.
Thanks, Brenda. Resolution two one zero zero nine zero.
Authorizing the handling of RACP on behalf of the Scranton Lackawanna Human Development Agency, whereas the Scranton Lackawanna Human Development Agency Pre-Kinder Garden Project Phase Two entails the acquisition, construction, and renovations to an existing building to serve between one hundred and twenty and one hundred and sixty low-income children and families, with a pre-kindergarten center of excellence in Scranton, Pennsylvania. And whereas the County of Lackawanna is an eligible applicant for the RACP as a source of funds for the project. And whereas the Scranton Lackawanna Human Development Agency has proposed to assist Scranton Lackawanna Human Development Agency in obtaining funds, obtaining funding from the Commonwealth RACP Program for the Phase Two project. And whereas the county desires to assist the Scranton Lackawanna Human Development Agency in obtaining funding on the Commonwealth Redevelopment Assistance Capital Program for the project. Whereas Lackawanna County hereby authorizes the Chair of the Lackawanna County Board of Commissioners to sign and authorize all documents and accept any awards related to these RACP funds. And now therefore be it resolved that the Lackawanna County Board of Commissioners is hereby authorized to file and to accept an application in the amount of five hundred thousand dollars to the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania for a RACP program on behalf of the Scranton Lackawanna Human Development Agency for Phase Two of the project. Adopted at a regular meeting of the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County held on April seventh, 2021. Once again, Commissioners here is Director Sacco.
This resolution is also authorizing the filing of a redevelopment assistance capital program grant application with the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania on behalf of Scranton Lackawanna Human Development Agency, S L H D A, in the amount of five hundred thousand for their pre-kindergarten Phase Two project. The project is expected to cost over one point five million dollars and will be located in Scranton and will serve between one hundred and twenty and one hundred and sixty low-income children and the families within Lackawanna County. Any questions?
Nobody has any questions for Brenda? I'll entertain a motion to approve.
Motion.
Second, on the question, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Thanks, Brenda.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Resolution two one zero zero nine one.
Adopting a Lackawanna County twenty twenty-one Hazard Mitigation Plan Update, whereas the municipalities of Lackawanna County, Pennsylvania are most vulnerable to natural and human-made hazards that may result in loss of life and property, economic hardship, and threats to public safety, public health, and safety. And whereas Section three two two of the Disaster Mitigation Act of two thousand requires state and local governments to develop and submit for approval a mitigation plan that outlines the process for identifying their respective natural hazards, risks, and vulnerabilities. And whereas Lackawanna County acknowledges the requirements of Section three two two of the Disaster Mitigation Act of two thousand to have an improved hazard mitigation plan as a prerequisite to receiving post-disaster hazard mitigation grant program funds. And whereas the Lackawanna County twenty twenty-one Hazard Mitigation Plan Update has been developed by the Department of Planning and Economic Development and the Emergency Management Agency in cooperation with other county departments, local municipal officials, and the citizens of Lackawanna County. And whereas, a public involvement process consistent with the requirements of the Disaster Mitigation Act of two thousand was conducted to develop the Lackawanna County twenty twenty-one Hazard Mitigation Plan Update, and that the Lackawanna County twenty twenty-one Hazard Mitigation Plan Update recommends mitigation activities that will reduce losses of life and property affected by both natural and human, human-made hazards that face the county and its municipal governments. Now therefore be it resolved by the Board of Commissioners of the County of Lackawanna that, the Lackawanna County twenty twenty-one Hazard Mitigation Plan Update is hereby adopted as the official hazard mitigation plan of the county, and the respective officials and agencies identified in the implementation strategy of the Lackawanna County twenty twenty-one Hazard Mitigation Plan Update are hereby directed to implement the recommended activities assigned to them. Adopted at a regular meeting of the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County held on April seventh, 2021. Finally, once again, here is Director Sacco.
This resolution is adopting the Lackawanna County twenty twenty-one Hazard Mitigation Plan Update that was approved by FEMA in February of twenty twenty-one. This plan is required to be updated every five years as a prerequisite to receiving post-disaster hazard mitigation program funds. All forty of the county's municipalities signed agreements to participate in and adopt the county plan. And once this plan is adopted here by the county, it will then be adopted by the local municipalities as well. Any questions?
No, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion to approve.
Motion.
Second, on the question, all in favor?
Aye.
Thanks.
You're welcome, have a good day.
Thank you very much.
Bye.
Okay, resolution two one zero zero nine seven.
This is ratifying an area agency on aging addendum, be it resolved, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna, hereby ratify the Department of Human Services, Area Agency, Agency on Aging Addendum with the Wright Center for Community Health. Adopted at a regular meeting of the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County held on April seventh, 2021. Here to speak upon that, Commissioners is Director Jason Kugulich.
Good morning, everyone. This particular addendum to the Wright Center contract that we have in place is to, is for vaccine testing. is to, is for vaccine testing. Um, when we did the testing with the mobile vaccine clinics at, at the older adult high-rises and older adult living facilities in Lackawanna County.
And commissioners, I just want to add to that if I can. Um, this addendum, which was initially entered into back in December, I think it was December twenty third, actually, of twenty twenty. Um, we're just ratifying it right now because we were simply awaiting the fully executed document back from the Wright Center. It in fact was executed by all parties back on December twenty third, but logistically, we were waiting for them to get it over. So we just did receive it over the past week or so. Jason had requested it from them. And so we're just moving forward with the, with ratifying it at this time, which is what we would do in this instance and every other instance in which a similar contract would arise.
Frank, this is just a formality at this point, right?
That's all it is, chief. Yes, as I said, it was entered into back in December. And so we wouldn't ratify a contract typically until it was fully executed. So now that we've got it back fully executed, we're going to move on it. Um, and again, I mean, just, and Gary talked to this a little bit before. Uh, the costs emanating out of this, we don't anticipate any additional costs per se, or at least any costs relative to any visits related to, uh, uh, the vaccination program from the Wright Center. But this specifically had to do with the testing component back at the time.
All right, thank you. Anyone have any questions?
No.
I'll entertain a motion to approve.
Motion.
Second on the question, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Okay, motion two one zero zero nine three. Uh, motion to approve the quote from Election Systems and Software LLC for an additional workstation and software for the Department of Elections cost not to exceed twenty seven thousand six hundred and fifty four dollars.
Here to speak upon that, commissioners, is Attorney Donald Fredrickson.
Uh, good morning commissioners and thank you. On behalf of the election board, we are requesting a permission to purchase an additional workstation for the election bureau. Uh, currently we have one workstation is what it is used for on election night when the little cards come in from the different wards and precincts throughout the county. Uh, they're processed through these workstations. We only have one, so right now we can only process one, uh, one card at a time. This will make for a more efficient canvassing of the returns. And additionally, after that night, these workstations are also used to process the write-in ballots that come in uh, on, on the, uh, from the different wards and precincts. So this, again, this will allow the, uh, the election bureau to more efficiently and quickly process the canvas of the election results for forthcoming elections. Again, this money is not coming from the general fund. Uh, we have grant money that we have that will cover the complete cost of the software and of the workstation.
Anything else? Anyone have anything else? I just want to commend the, uh, election bureau for the great job they did in the, the last election. It was, you know, we're amongst the leaders in the state, as we have been with our human services, as we have been with our vaccines, as we were with the election. And, uh, thank Beth and Mary Medallis and everyone for all the great work they've done. Thank you.
Thank you, Jerry.
Thank you.
On, on election night, commissioners, we were the first large county to report in the state.
Yeah, and I'm not surprised. All right, anyone have any questions?
I do. I have one simple question. Is, uh, Donnie, is this something I can vote on? No problem.
I'm sorry, Commissioner.
Is, am I okay to vote on this since I'm a candidate technically?
Oh yeah, absolutely.
Yeah, there's, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, you're exercising your authority as a commissioner here. This isn't an election board issue. Yeah.
Yep, that's fine. Just, just, I know, that's all.
No problem, sure.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion to approve.
Uh, motion.
Second on the question, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion two one zero zero nine four. A motion to award the Beaver Pond Road Structure Replacement to Pioneer Construction, the lowest and most responsible bidder at four hundred and seven thousand two hundred and forty-three dollars and forty cents.
Commissioners here to speak upon that is the county engineer Frank Suma.
Morning commissioners. Um, Brian, I just got dropped in cold here. We're, um, we're speaking. Did you give them an update on Beaver Pond?
That's, they're, they're making a motion on Beaver Pond right now. So if they have, you have any, uh, thing to add and tell them, explain to them what's going on with the Beaver Pond, uh, structure replacement?
Yes, commissioners, so, um. Uh, regarding the motion to award the Beaver Pond Road Structure Replacement, uh, this is a structural replacement in Newton Township. The current bridge is structurally deficient and needs to be replaced. Uh, qualifies entirely for Act thirteen funding. And one hundred percent of the costs associated with this replacement will be covered by Act thirteen without needing additional, um, county capital funds. We solicited public bids and the lowest qualified bidder was Pioneer Construction at a cost of four hundred and seven thousand two hundred and forty-three dollars and forty cents. Um, it is my recommendation, we, we do award to Pioneer. Any, any questions?
Nope, not for me. Thank you.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion to approve.
Motion.
Second on the question, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Uh, motion two one zero zero nine five. A motion to award Freight Town Road Structure Replacement to Pioneer Construction, the lowest and most responsible bidder for three hundred and fifty-six thousand eight hundred ninety-five dollars and seventy cents.
Commissioners, once again, Mr. Suma.
Uh, thank you. Uh, this also is a bridge replacement project that would be covered by Act thirteen funding. This bridge replacement is in Covington Township. Um, structure is also structurally deficient and needs to be replaced soon. We've confirmed funding and one hundred percent will be covered by Act thirteen without any additional need for county capital funds. Uh, we also solicited public bids for this project and Pioneer again was the lowest qualified bidder. Uh, Pioneer's bid was three hundred and fifty-six thousand dollars, three hundred and fifty-six thousand eight hundred and ninety-five dollars and seventy cents. Um, is my recommendation, we award to Pioneer.
Thank you. Anyone have any questions?
The only question I have, Commissioner, is Frank, any issues from your perspective as far as the timeliness of, of the one company being able to complete both jobs?
Uh, no, they're, they're to complete both projects. Um, in fact, with regard to procurement, uh, requirement, I, I think it would be unfair to say they would be not qualified or not the lowest qualified bidder.
Right.
As far as only recommending that they would only be awarded one and not the other, I, I don't, I don't see a need to, to discuss that. And I, I'm confident they can do both.
Great. Thanks.
Entertain a motion to approve.
Motion.
Second on the question, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, motion two one zero zero nine six. Motion toward the Hack Road Structure Replacement to Minichi Incorporated, the lowest and most responsible bidder for three hundred and eighty-seven thousand dollars.
Finally, once again, Mr. Suma.
Thank you. Uh, this bridge replacement project is located in Benton Township. The structure is also structurally deficient, um, and also qualifies one hundred percent for Act thirteen funding with no additional need for, for county capital funds. Um, again, we solicited public bids for this project. This project's lowest qualified bidder was Miniki Construction with a bid price of three hundred and eighty-seven thousand dollars. Um. Again, I, I recommend we, we move forward to award. Any questions?
I'll entertain a motion to approve.
Motion.
Second on the question, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. All right, moving forward, opportunity for the public to address the board. Ms. Hart, I'll be, excuse me one second.
Okay.
Go ahead, Trace.
All right. I received three emails. So the first one is from Rosemary Bohanik. She works at the Children's Advocacy Center. And the first one is, if possible, she said, please just read aloud at your meeting. So the Children's Advocacy Center of Northeastern Pennsylvania asked if you suspect child abuse or neglect to please call the child line to report it. The number is one eight hundred nine three two zero three one three. Thank you. The second email that I received is from Beverly Pensick. And she said that the traffic lines to indicate where the motorist should be when making a left-hand turn from either direction on Main Avenue to go to the Viewmont Mall or to get on the highway have been worn off since last year. I'm very concerned that is a, quote, accident leading to happen, end quote, when there are cars making a left-hand turn from both directions at the same time on Main Avenue. Please look into the matter and have the lines painted on the road. Thank you.
Trace, why don't we send that to Mr. Suma and let him forward it to Ben Dot for us?
Okay.
And hopefully he gets the answer back. I'm sure with the springtime season coming up, we'll start painting the lines again.
And the third and final email is from Anthony Bruno of Clifton Township. He says, greetings. Please help me understand why county officials agreed to pay over thirty-five thousand dollars to administer the vaccine to county employees and senior citizens. The eligible people from the county and seniors should be covered with their insurance. My wife and I got our first jab on March twentieth from Hometown Healthcare after waiting two months because the state cut the distribution. We did not get a bill for the shot like some people got from the Wright Center. We signed up with Hometown Healthcare on Facebook, which was a lot easier than that useless two-on-one and that map with the dots on it. The state attorney general and the insurance companies should investigate if these so-called service charges, as Dr. Thomas Hiemack calls them, are legal. A sign at the entrance states that you will be charged for a visit. So which is it? A visit or a service charge, whichever it is, gouging the taxpayers of Lackawanna County? How sad is it that a nonprofit uses a pandemic to take advantage of people? I guess I should be prepared for a COVID tax increase like the one twenty-one slash two percent in twenty nineteen. I hope county officials evaluate funding and using the Wright Center for future needs. For the record, I am a seventy-four-year-old with a heart condition and my wife is seventy years old. And thanks to the good people at Hometown Healthcare in Covington Township for getting us on their list. After paying taxes for over thirty years and no thanks to Lackawanna County.
I, I can speak upon that. Uh, first of all, we, we believe, not that we believe, but the insurance did cover all the seniors that we were getting vaccinated in the high-rises. We believed at the time getting the seniors vaccinated in the high-rises was a priority because of their inability to get out and get the, uh, the vaccines themselves. So we brought the vaccines to them. As far as the employees go, uh, why, I did explain this to the paper that we are self-insured. So we negotiated a price, uh, from two hundred and, I believe it was forty dollars down to a hundred and fifty dollars. So if we either paid them through our, our, our general fund or our general fund, then we'd end up paying our self-insured insurance cost. So we did take care about both of those situations. Also, I would like to compliment and, and thank the Hometown Healthcare, knowing for getting these individuals their shots. But helping with all of our providers in our partnership through getting all of, uh, our one A shots out to the senior citizens and those who are eligible under one A. Um, we believe, we're very confident that we are above the ninety percentile range for the one, with the one A factor. And, uh, those who still remain and want to get shots, we will still absolutely open up clinics for them. Uh, we are having two clinics this weekend. Uh, one is at Montage held by Delta Medics. And the other one is held at Sacred Heart in the Mid Valley by a family pharmacy. Get it to those, you can either look up their websites or you can actually call the two-one-one number. I know that in the beginning in January and February, the two-on-one number was, was backed up. However, all that eventually were on that list have now been vaccinated. Uh, actually, they were vaccinated last week. So, uh, the list on two-on-one is exhausted. And the timeframe between you calling in and getting an appointment in, in, on the wait line is about fifteen minutes. I suggest highly that everybody that wants to get a shot, call two-on-one or look up the websites of those two, uh, groups that I just named, Delta Medics and Family Pharmacy. We will also be listing, uh, numerous clinics coming up over the next couple of weeks. And we'll be getting that information out to the media and to everyone on our website. Uh, we will continue to hold clinics, this county will, until everyone in this county who wants a shot gets a shot. Um, that's all I have, commissioners.
How many people have we gotten vaccinated so far in the county, Brian?
Uh, our la, our last numbers come from Friday's numbers of last week. And, and those with, uh, we have total eight, over eighty thousand individuals as of last Friday that have at least one shot. And it was fifty thousand with two shots, meaning they're fully vaccinated, and thirty thousand with one shot. Um, our population is two hundred, approximately two hundred and ten thousand people. We're approximating between twelve to fifteen thousand of those individuals are between the ages of infancy and fifteen years old. So we are, we believe that we're above the eighty thousand number right now because it was last week. Um, we believe we're at about forty-two percent of our, of our, of our county has at least one shot in them. And we believe that going forward, um, we, you know, we're looking at a hundred ninety-five thousand people that would be eligible for the shot in Lackawanna County with eighty thousand out of that already. So we believe over the next two months that we will continue to get everyone in this county vaccinated. It was, uh, provider partner that we had meetings with yesterday are now even talking and going out to taking care of, of this minority populations, which they have been doing. They're going to the homebound populations, which they have been doing, and they're going now into trying to get the homeless vaccinated as we speak. So these.
Yeah, it, the, the remark about the two-on-one number, I, I, that's, you know, it's interesting, but everyone is a great Monday morning quarterback. Uh, they, they did a remarkable job. Uh, we're really, you know, we were upfront and out front on setting that program up. Our area agency on aging and our Department of Human Services did a phenomenal job. Uh, again, it was, everyone was trying to get vaccinated. And we get it, but we only had so many vaccines and we only had so many providers. I think that, uh, staff at Lackawanna County has done a phenomenal job. And Mr. Jeffers, uh, did a, a great job. And I think everyone is to be commended for the, the, the good work that they did to get this done. We're one of the top counties in the, in the state. Uh, we are in a better position than many places. And I think we, we really stepped up to the plate. Lackawanna County never closed down. Other government facilities, agencies did. We didn't. We stayed open. Commissioner Shurek, Commissioner Dominic, myself, Mr. Jeffers, Ms. Hart, everyone was here the day after it was determined to be a pandemic. And we've been here since. Uh, it, again, it's great to be a Monday morning quarterback. It's, you think you can do it better? Jump in. Not likely. Doing a great job and I want to thank them all for all their hard work. Thank you.
Commissioner, taxpayers, taxpayers will not be paying for those examinations.
Correct, correct. And again, it's not our responsibility to figure out what they're supposed to charge and what they're not. That's healthcare providers. Our job was to get them done as soon as we could. That was our job and we did it.
Well, on that note, you know, this isn't just a pandemic in Lackawanna County, it's a worldwide pandemic. So, of course. Um, but last week's vaccination, the mass vaccination site that we did at the pavilion at Montage, you know, thanks to Brian and, and Mark Dewar, our sheriffs, Jason Kavulich, Hometown Health, we did thirty-six hundred vaccinations and for the most part was flawless. So, you know, I can't thank everybody enough. I, it, it was remarkable how happy everybody was when they were leaving. It, it was, it was, it went terrific, you know, but we have to, and I, I want to thank too, you know, we wouldn't have been able to do that the donation of the ultra freezer from Keystone Sanitary Landville. You know, they were a big help. We couldn't have had the Pfizer vaccine without them, you know, so thanks to them as well. But it was, it was a great event. We're going to be back there in three weeks doing the second one. Uh, and I, I know it'll even go smoother.
We're, and Commissioner, we're going to be up there this Saturday with a different provider.
Right.
Be up there this Saturday with thirteen hundred shots.
And what, what manufacturer is that? Do you know?
The shots, I don't recall off the top of my head. There's just so many clinics going on, I, I, I can't keep up with.
Yeah, no, no, no.
Which, which shot is where? Uh, but, but you know what? It doesn't matter. In, in the real, in the real world, it doesn't matter what type of shot it is as long as we get shots in the.
That's right. Well, you know, they did a great job and, and having all the students from Lackawanna College and Penn State. I mean, it was just, it was, it was great and it was, people were thrilled, but good job by everyone. I can't thank everybody enough.
And we were able to help the, um, providers through the Chamber of Commerce um, document the vaccines because the state would not send them unless the documentation was done. They didn't, the providers of, of pharmacy didn't have the ability. They didn't, the providers, a pharmacy didn't have the ability to do that as quickly as they could give the shots and the Chamber of Commerce helped us out tremendously in getting that done with the students from all the local universities and schools. So again, thank you, everyone.
My first worldwide pandemic, I thought we did a great job and are doing it great.
The Chamber's been a great partner with us through this entire pandemic. I mean, Commissioners have distributed over six million dollars in funding for small businesses and in a small part with the help of the Chamber. And I think that's something that sometimes people forget, the darkest day of pandemic, the county was helping people out with money too. So we've been doing this since March of last year. We'll continue doing it until this pandemic is done.
We were sworn in in January of last year and less, a little over, no, about two months later, we got a pandemic. So it was, it's been an interesting and challenging time, but I think we've stepped up to the required situation.
I think so.
Yeah. All right, on that, nothing else, Ms. Hart?
No, that's all I have for you today.
Commissioners, other business?
The only other thing I have is we have another meeting, our Bipartisan Budget Study Commission meets today, breaking into groups, starting to look at individual departments. So that's moving forward. That's all I have.
Thank you. And the only thing I'd like to mention, you know, there was an editorial in the Scranton Times the other day about reassessment. I have been committed since the beginning of the first time I ran to reassess. We did get sidetracked a little bit with the pandemic and with different things. We are moving forward on that. We have talked with our finance and our Tax Assessor's Office. We are moving forward with that. We are working on that. We don't know if the funds will be available through this new act, but it's not, it doesn't matter. We're still going to get it done. That's the key. And that's all I have and that, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion.
Second on the question, all in favor. I thank you all.